All the county farming complaining board from November 3rd order. We'll start with the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. For those of you that haven't been here before, there's an exit over here on the door over here and an exit out front. If there's a fire or something, you follow Ron, he'll be the first one up, so that's not a problem. Just follow Ron, he'll show you where to go. Other hand, there is a sign in sheet over here, or there was, I think Jerry had it now. You'll please sign in so that the clerk has an official name for you when it comes that time. Electronics, cell phone, watches, all that good stuff, please mute them so that we don't get interrupted. Next item up is approval of the minutes of the last meeting. Can we get a chance to review? Do we have a, uh, he, Jerry got it back there, sir, he'll, he'll bring it back up in a second.
I'm sorry, I just got circulated by a lot of people, this is a form of a.
Yeah. Um, everybody got a chance to review the minutes? Any changes? Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve? Move by Adrian, second by Doug, any other comments? All papers, six probably saying aye.
Aye.
One session, I wasn't here. We do have Aaron, that is one of our members, he is necessarily absent tonight. So, um, we'll follow the order of business on the agenda. First item up, uh, we have two items for the farming common, one is a subdivision, which is currently an open public hearing, and then there's the preliminary site plan, so. Who would like to, Matt's gonna start us off here.
We've got Matt Donaldson, Marathon Engineering, deputy deputy Dan McLeary, and joined by Jared Goldman, Jim Stathopoulos, the owner, and Tim Nimitz is also here representing the agriculture group, and we have some presentation materials. Apologize that the board did not have those previously. They were in the original package, but they didn't get swapped over to the new one, so we have it now, we want to get your feedback on it, and then we'll talk to any comments that you may have. So, since we have been here last time, we did address comments received from town staff, from MRB group, and from the planning board specifically, and incorporated those in, I'm not sure where the keyboard went, so.
It's under the. Right, right, under me.
Okay, great, thanks. And I'm gonna share this, I believe, with us today, all right?
Yep.
So I just want to step through those comments, and some of the things that we've updated that were of particular concern or comment from the planning board to show you how we've addressed them. We believe that we've captured the majority of them, either between what was in the revised plans that went back to you folks and, and MRB and town staff, or in subsequent conversations that we've had even approved today between myself, Ron, and highway superintendent, just to clarify some of the pavement coring comments and some of the other things. So, just a quick run through on those for you guys. For the planning board specifically, what we heard last week was relative to the Route 96 entrance, emergency vehicles, and the width and pavement condition along the frontage of this road. So, we have added curving from where it ends currently along the east side, all the way along, and made the pavement section a consistent 26 feet through that entire section as well, and we're intending to match that curve through where the existing concrete curve ends up. I know there was some concern raised, and I think it's mostly right in this area where there's some potholes that had formed off the edge of that. Folks waiting to take a left, people were trying to swing around down, that kind of thing. Jim is also gonna be doing some preventative maintenance before snowplowers get out there. We're not gonna be doing this driveway this fall, this winter, so we want to address that in advance. So, wanted to let the board know that we're taking care of that. And then, specific to, and I believe you guys have been provided a copy of the turning movements, we had done and originally performed some turning movements with a generic fire truck, and then the fire chief, and Dan took the opportunity to provide us the actual model. I think it's a Pierce aerial truck. And we built that truck within our turning movements, and I do have the auto terms, which I don't know if you guys have, but I can bring them up here. Matt, they do, uh, they should be provided at your.
At our office.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Great. So basically, we built that truck, and we ran it through the two areas that were of concern and raised at the planning board this past month. One coming in with the reconfiguration of the entrance off of Route 96, because there was concern about making that truck move all the way around the plaza to the front if it couldn't maneuver through that area. And it can maneuver through within it. And then also for having it go around the credit unit that's returning. It does need fire code, just coming in and then backing out, but this shows that it can be all the way around the building, just so you guys know. I opened up the same thing again, sorry about that. All right, so back, back to the site plans, there are several comments of, and questions on the draft tabling resolution. And I just want to cover a couple of those from a discussion purpose in, in how we view those. I've had a chance to talk them through both with Jerry and with the ownership, in order to how we're gonna address that, so I wanted to relay that to the, to the town tonight. So, one question that came up specifically was relative to town code in the zoning requirements for light spill within a plaza.
Hey, can I interrupt here? Go ahead.
The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the preliminary subdivision.
Right.
So let's, let's, let's.
Just focus on the subdivision, then go to the next.
Then go to the subdivision.
Okay.
Please.
I'm sorry, Matt.
That's all right. That makes sense.
There's haven't been too many changes to the subdivision.
I did bring the subdivision plan right here. And we did receive a draft resolution on that. We have addressed the comments that were included in the MRB and staff comments in the original letter, and it looks like there's a couple of additional outstanding comments that are listed as potential conditions. I've reviewed those with the owner, we've reviewed them in-house, and we're working on our surveyor pulling the actual documents for the easements from the clerk's office. See if this gets done at the end of this week, and we have no issue with any of the other conditions relative to the subdivision itself.
Do you want to just go, continue on, and?
Yeah, this is a public hearing, that, Matt.
Okay.
The other one is not a public hearing. I would like to separate.
Separate the two, okay. So, that's what we have from the applicant. Ron, you're next. This is on the subdivision.
Correct.
Okay.
I, I don't have any issues, I retract to the final, excuse me, preliminary resolution for that. You've seen it. You, I think we're ready to go on that.
You're good, okay, Dan?
Yeah, I agree with Ron, draft resolution's been for the preliminary, and at this point, I have no other comments. Draft.
Don, subdivision? Engineering, that's.
Our comments regarding subdivision have been addressed.
Okay, this is a public hearing, do we have anyone that would wish to speak for or against this application? There's the re-subdivision in the farming commons, or anyone who'd like to, in the room, like to comment on it? How about online, anybody online? We had Barry online earlier, anybody else?
You have a couple online, Chris, I can see no comments at this point.
Okay, anybody online, like to comment for or against the re-subdivision? Okay, next item is to close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Tim.
Second by Adrian, any other comments? All papers, super probably saying aye. Okay, public hearing's closed. Okay, we have a resolution with conditions that the applicant has decreed to. Motion to wait reading and approve this resolution with conditions. Oh, I'm glad, yeah, you guys want to talk about subdivision?
No, I'm good with that.
I'm good.
And you're right.
You're going, I'm just thinking.
I know, I know, yeah. You guys gotta keep it straight, I went on vacation, I gotta get retrained. Two weeks in Florida, man, I tell you, I gotta get retrained for sure. Okay. So, do I have a motion to wait reading and approve the resolution with conditions?
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, and second by Doug, any other comments? Okay, we won't call both, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Subdivision?
Aye.
Adrian, you guys, aye.
Aye. Okay, subdivision, preliminary done, completed. Now, let's talk about the, um, site plan.
Just figure number one, talk, talk.
Well, they probably didn't, but we needed to do it administrated.
I had your feature. If I didn't do it.
He was gonna smack you when I got back, so. Uh, all right, so we've covered turning movements, we've covered the improvements to the driveway. The other item that was raised that there was kind of an open question relative to the lighting, light spill, what does code require within a common area of development similar to this? So I had a chance to review your, the lighting code, which is section 165-64 for exterior lighting, and it talks really specifically about light trespass, so I brought that just so we can discuss it, because there was question relative to ATM Safety Act, what's required by state law, what was written into the resolution for our site setback areas, and relative to a screen that's going to be provided. The revised plans do show that fence, although we haven't selected an actual fence yet, there's some security concerns with shadows and solid, and so we're just working through that. There are no concerns from the owner's standpoint relative to headlight trespass, and I know that was part of the discussion, you know, bank is closed by 5, 6 o'clock. It's not like a residence where headlights are gonna cause a problem, this is more of a solid wall on this side, and all headlights for the bank earlier going this way, which one in fact is Burger King. So the section specifically that talks about light trespass is section M1. So in all zoning districts at the pavement edge of adjoining public roads, maximum of a half foot candle except for say access points where maximum of one foot candle at pavement edges permitted. So a public road, the edge of the road is actually out here, we have no light spill generated by our lighting out there. So we're in compliance, and as you can see, essentially at the right of way itself is where the half foot candle falls. And then, secondly, part three of that same section, non-residential districts, no maximum limit for light spill. However, light trespass shall be based upon adjoining uses and light levels to ensure that IES and A standards are not exceeded. So, IES, New York State ATM Safety Act, those supersede any of these federal requirements, and there are no maximum requirements, meaning, yes, we have overlapping lighting, the Burger King's there, we do have the bank, because the Burger King controls their own lighting, and the bank has to control their own to ensure compliance. That's where we have some overlapping in it. It is going to be well lit along this portion of the property, but there are no code restrictions or anything else. So I wanted to make sure that we put that on the record for the boards, that they're, they are understanding that we are in compliance with code with what is being proposed here.
Okay.
Relative to the remaining, we did receive on November 2nd a copy of revised comments from MRB group. We whittled that down from three or four pages to just two pages with six or seven comments on it. I think, for the most part, in reviewing them, they are technical in nature, have some comment relative to some of the lighting, the overall concept plan, which is also mentioned in the draft resolution, which I'm gonna get to in a little bit, a little bit of some standard detailing and construction sequencing to be amended, and then a couple of swift comments for the stormwater pollution prevention plan that we will hammer out with Lance and his folks prior to final, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So, I don't see any issues there that we can't work through as we move this thing to final. And then, subsequent to that, before I turn it over to Tim to talk about the architecture a little bit, we did get a chance to review the draft resolution, and I'm gonna let Jerry talk about the procedural points or requests from our standpoint. But, relative to some of the conditions that I believe we should talk about here tonight, the layout plan that talks about the four foot visual barrier, again, that is shown right along the property line in through here. We're working through exactly what that's gonna look like, and we'll have that for the board definitely before finals for their consideration. The layout plan amended to add a section of five foot wide concrete sidewalk between the northern driveway entrance exit, so that would be aligned with the other ramp that's intended to provide future access, and along to this north property of the lot. As you can see here, that the road currently sweeps up, and I know that there's been discussion about the alignment on the overall concept plan versus what it is now, recognizing that that is not nailed down, we don't know exactly what that's gonna be, we know it's not gonna be straight through, we know it probably is not gonna end where it is, but what it ultimately is, we're not sure yet. So what we'd like to request or potentially propose is that we provide a sidewalk or a pedestrian easement over the frontage of this lot to allow for future sidewalk installation that would accommodate that light that we're talking about in requesting, but not necessarily install that now for a couple of reasons. One being, we don't know ultimately where we want it to connect to, other than we want it to connect to the pedestrian route through the rest of the plaza. And two, the current configuration of that roadway does not let itself to a sidewalk ramp being placed right, you know, immediately adjacent to that private lot.
With the commitment to build at some point when the town requires it.
So we would reserve an easement if that was necessary, and that would be Jim granting an easement to himself, because he's going to own it unless until the bank enacts the clause to purchase the property. So, that's a relatively straightforward thing that we can add to the preliminary subdivision or final subdivision and ensure that that's reserved for future pedestrian connection.
So easement's different than the commitment to build.
I don't think there's any issue in committing it to build.
I mean, I wouldn't think so, but you just want to make sure that it's both an easement and a commitment to build at such time as the rest of it gets built, and it makes sense. As opposed to have the town have to then build it, I'd rather have it.
Yeah, and it's on private property, so there'd be no other expectation that the town would. And I think it's clearly been stated by the board and received by us that there needs to be some thought for pedestrian connectivity within the development as it moves forward, so.
Just wanted to clarify and keep that on the record, thank you.
Thank you. The borings, again, I spoke with Don and with Ron today, we have a plan in place, we've reached out to Geotech, that's information that we will provide on the section, whether or not any work needs to be done in order to bring it into compliance or it suits building for emergency vehicles. We would request that versus that being placed on the preliminary plan, that that be, that detail be included on the final plans. I think that's a construction detail clarification. Skipping ahead to lighting and landscaping comment, there was a specific comment about additional trees, I think it totaled six maples along this east property line. I did reach out to the landscape architect, he said that number of those maples along here would end up being quite crowded and possibly infinge on it. And again, not knowing the configuration here, planting trees that have to take them down in the future because they're impacted, doesn't necessarily make sense to us. Specific on that side, which faces a blank wall in the plaza, of course, if it's a condition that the board requires us to do, we'll do it. It just seemed to us to be premature to landscape that edge in such a way that specified a number of trees. I think the presentation to the street and along the roadway with some of the landscaping beds, and I know that there's some comments about additional landscaping, which we will work towards with our final site plan adaptation. But, the specific along that property line, we just wanted to have that be a discussion point with the board to know what the intention was there. Okay? Moving on to the entrance along Route 96, we were looking to modify that island in such a way to cut that off. What we're going to do is cut this parking back by a couple spaces to maintain that tree, the cost of relocation of that tree would be significant. And we were actually adding a couple of spaces over there versus what we were taking away, which I think was a total of three off the end there. So we're more than making up for it, so we're just gonna remove those to, to keep the tree. There was also comment in that same about the crosswalk and signage being required. And we are showing that currently with the signs and the crosswalk, so I think we've already addressed that condition, unless there was something that we're missing that, that wasn't included. I guess, are there any questions with what I stated there or discussion items before?
I think it's a good start, let's, if you're done with that part of it, we can, Ron, you wanna let Jerry and?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, you can just continue on, and then we'll go to staff, and then the, the board, okay, how's that sound?
Sure, that sounds good, I'm gonna have Tim come up and introduce the, the building itself.
I'm running material for, for you. Hi, my name is Tim Nimitz, senior architectural designer, I live in Ocky Group. We are a design deals firm, and all we do is financials. So branches may offices, that's kind of our bread and butter. So our, our client doesn't want to be disclosed yet, so it's a financial institution. The design is based on kind of a, a mountain of few different things. We just redid their branding for them, they have a new, a new branding, which is very similar to what you see in signage. Here, it's just very vague. But they have a few, a few branches already, but they wanted to try and keep a relationship between those existing branches and what we did do. We wanted to go with something a little more modern, a little more contemporary, their existing branches are very traditional. So we wanted to take some of that traditional feeling, the, the, you know, the gable roofs, the simple lines, and add a little bit to it. So we went with some more contemporary colors with high contrast. So we've, we've got a kind of nice, nice beige-y brick, and then we're kind of accenting that with, with the charcoal pieces that you're seeing here. The next feature is something very identifiable, we have an entry tower on what would be the northeast corner of the building. And, and the idea is, is to be a focal point for the street. It's not only the signage that's drawing your eye to the building, it's also the clarity of the glass, the things that are going on inside. We've got some dimensional, dimensional pieces on the wall, as well as some digital marking. And then, apart from, from kind of the traditional design of, of, of a branch where you've done the entire outside of the building with boxes, what we're trying to do is keep that, that large glass piece that you see in the front, that's actually locked. So, it's marketing pieces, internet, it's, it's, it's ways for, for their, their membership to come in and have a kind of a full experience, there's some teller line, they're using a pod system, they'll go to something a little more electronic later. But the idea is to really get your focus from the outside, looking in, and not seeing the back somebody's head and monitor screen. You really want to see the energy, how what's going on there, and draw you into the building. So that's, that was kind of our basis, there we've got two drive-through lanes with the option for a third later on. And the rest of the, of the, the site is very simple, you know, try to keep as efficient as possible.
So, knowing that that's somewhat generic, would the final version be very similar to that?
No, no, this is, this is the final version.
Okay, so it is the final version, the only thing that's not specific on here is the sign. Okay.
That's the only thing that's, that's not specific on, but that is the back for what the sign is.
Okay, fine, okay. Jerry, did you have anything before we slipped to staff? Of course, Jerry has, never, I should never have asked.
Actually, just as, I think perhaps you should hear staff comments first, and then just like the wrap up.
Okay.
Thanks.
So you want, you want to go on and go ahead and have four comments?
Yeah, well, we'll.
Oh, well, that's that, and then you can wrap up.
And then I can back up.
Okay, we don't want to miss that. Okay, Ron?
All right, well, a couple things that I would like to compliment Tim on. First of all, the commitment made tonight to make the repairs along that driveway, I think that's very timely and most appropriate, and hopefully we can get that taken care of. Secondly, I, I'd like to thank Jim for listening to me complain about how we would like to have the west end of that plaza corrected with some different alignment and make a connection to the sidewalk between 96 and the plaza. I hats off to Jim for stepping up to the plate and doing that at this time. Regarding the landscaping along the property line, I looked at the landscaping plan and saw that they had one tree on the adjacent remaining parcel of the plaza. I said, okay, we've got one new tree coming in there, let's put some more along there and make it a, a good buffer between that, because who knows how long it's gonna be before that additional land of the plaza occurs. So that's why we came up with that magical number, I just picked it out of the air, six, maybe too many, we'll find out. The other thing that I want to just emphasize to the, the planning board is the, the zoning board of appeals required that fence separating the shoe back uses, it's more than light trespass. I'm looking at a security issue here that somebody's sitting in that Burger King restaurant, watching people go through the tellers, gonna have to jump over a four foot high fence to get there, and, and most people, that edge them. So I'm, I'm looking at that as a security measure as well to kind of minimize nighttime operations of those automatic tellers from people sitting in the parking lot waiting to make change for a Burger King. So, that was part of the rationale that we used. I'm also pleased to report to the board that Don and I and Matt didn't have a conference call this morning. We did resolve where we would like to hold the borings, just to verify, you know, what's, what's the base of this road? And is this something Jim has to be aware of in the future as more of that site develops? The zoning board of appeals made that a condition of approval, only to protect the town from the standpoint that, you know, we're creating a variance, but it's gotta be based on knowing that the road can sustain the movement of vehicles through there that have access easement, as well as emergency vehicles, so that was the rationale. Am I going to just gas pray here?
No, no.
Okay. So, you know, we're basically looking at your site plan, but I think I have no reason to doubt we're gonna approve. There are some things that we need added that are called for in the code, and we're asking for them to be added. And then, when they are, then I see no reason why, perhaps at a future meeting, we could move on final subdivision that approval, and, and also preliminary approval with whatever conditions come back. I know that Dan brought to my attention here tonight that the signs are a little bit large, so they may need some bearings. But if that's the case, let's get moving, you know, let's not wait till the 11th hour to find out if that's gonna happen, so. That's where we're at, sorry, Dan.
And, good.
Dan? All right, Ron did cover a lot, and I agree, but some of this has happened just of late, like you answered the phone call this morning about with the highway superintendent, the seminal of the elevations, you know, as Ron said, that I, I did do a very quick review. Signage does look too big for code. I'm suggesting to the applicant that they should highly review the MPOD and the MSOD for signage for this area. The other thing that just came in was the fire truck movement. I can, the fire marshal's starting to look at this, but he has not had the opportunity to.
Uh, the other thing that just came in was the fire truck movement, I can, the fire marshal's starting to look at this, but he has not had the opportunity to talk to the fire department in regards to this as well, which we want that piece of the pie um reviewed. It does, I mean, a quick review by the fire marshal, he did tell me that he he thinks it's all gonna work and, I mean, Matt, it's it looks like it does on paperwork, but we just wanna do our due diligence on that. Um, but then talking with water and sewer, we're a little concerned about the water supply to this building. Uh, per new common code, this building will have to be a sprinkler building and we don't think a one-in-sline will do a sprinkler.
Yeah, it's more information to me.
So. So, I I wanna let you guys know that, like I said, these were things that I've just stumbled across today with them, so uh, I I think that we would have to look at that on the utility side.
Yeah, the uh, the code change when?
Adjusted.
Just. Yeah, within the last month, I think, yeah, so.
We got.
So it definitely needs to be sprinkled. Any else, Dan?
That's, I I mean, like I said, I think Ron really summed it up nicely that we are getting close, I think this is definitely uh, on the right track and with a couple of changes and a couple of updates, I think that it would be ready for this work.
And I've been in discussions with staff today about potential base for our next for the continuation and I'll talk about that.
Yeah, just getting back to fire department, Don and I looked at this this morning, that big truck, you know.
Yeah.
Can't make a turn, if it can't completely come around and back up because it always goes in reverse when it goes back into the fire station, so we know that there's a reverse on it. And if necessary, to go around the building or perhaps attack whatever's going on from the rear, you know, it's 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 not necessarily a showstopper, it is something that.
Just needs good review.
Yeah.
Cool, okay, anything else, Dan?
No, I'm good.
Don?
Also, anything that I had concern with, it's already been placed here, I mean, just checking the road and see if the consistency of the base of the road is is of such where it will withstand not only the traffic with this, of the bank after it's built, but there's also the consideration of the traffic and the trucks and materials, concrete trucks and all of something, the road is questionable now. By the time we run all the concrete trucks, all the material trucks in there to build this facility, the road may be gone at that point. That is part of the reasoning for checking the base now, so we know that we're not gonna have a building in no role when we're done.
Very good, and and important, I think, to get it done in service before final because it, as we've prepared, it has to be replaced and get done, now, okay, any else, Doc? Lance?
Um, no, I, I remember you did issue a comment later late, based on when we received the application. We did determine that all of our preliminary comments had been addressed on the plans. We did offer some additional preliminary comments and that's more towards, but I think it's certainly, it was an idea that got brought up. I think at the last meeting about doing that other entrance, it was reflected on these plans, so we had a couple of new comments as related to that. Mostly, it was just for clarification purposes, I believe the intent is to keep the two lights that are out there. I'm assuming you're not proposing any new lights, obviously, we just wanna make sure that it's well lit or it needs to be well lit. Um, there are some questions of sequencing, which I think we can address as part of final. Um, but when that entrance gets obviously done, you don't want the other entrance blocked off, not that that's the intent, but I just wanna make sure that those two flow uh together and then obviously, if the building and the comments are in operation, each other, it's something they would be when some of this works done, we just wanna make sure there's appropriate staging area identified and so that we can. So those, those are my new comments really, preliminary that I think we can address as we go through the process. The rest of my comments mostly were dealing with stormwater and sweat, which will continue to work with you guys as part of final.
Okay, uh, well, I'm gonna start by going back to Dan, you, there were some questions that Aaron brought up, they all got pretty well answered, though.
Well, and and actually, the water line.
Water line was one of them.
One of them because he brought up about sprinklers, he was aware of our new code. Uh, and, yeah, we were gonna make sure when we get to building the building that there's sprinklers in it, but it's working backwards, that's how we got to the water. The other one was uh the key box or more commonly known as stops from what they use would be required on this building. Uh, Jim has been great about his other buildings, having not, I don't see that being an issue. Something that we would look at more in a building improvement timeframe than on a site plan per se, but it was a question that he brought up. Um, there was two others, I can't remember them off the top of my head.
I think you had answers for them, yeah. Okay, let's go to the board, Tim.
I I like the changes that have been, uh, my concern was, last time was over the entrance off Route ninety-six and that turn. I'm good with that. And I think the Tom staff was very complete with their comments, uh, that I appreciate and the design I like.
Cool.
Oh.
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, just just to start looking at these nights, I don't, true, there's a couple of things that jumped out, though, is in the event that that third lane is ever added, what's gonna be the height underneath that canopy, assuming it has a loop over that section because right now, maybe we'll be able to drive a fire truck through there, is there a canopy that's planned to go in that or is that just an add-on to these?
Third, third, no, it's al- it's already there, so you can see here, we've got one machine here, there would be another one that would be right on the outside of the uh outside of the lane.
Can't because it's extended.
Right, can't, but it doesn't extend, it's already extended as far as.
All right, so that's where I'm just going.
Yeah, guys, so that size always been. Expand that color, I heard expansion. Absolutely, okay. Um, that's, I guess, I mean, all I've ever.
Okay.
It does look like there's a signage now up in the front, maybe, um, so.
And I, Tim and I haven't had a chance to connect, but my understanding is we wanna stay within code if at all possible, so if there's something larger than more with Dan, that's, we'll try to get that package sooner than later. We don't, we can't submit our signage package until the tenant's ready to share the names.
Right, right, well, and and part of that is, so when I did the signage, I did it off of the code, if we have to make a small adjustment on it. Um, and that's fine, but if if, you know, we we wanna look at it and figure out where footage is a different way, we can do that. A monument sign also on here, so you're gonna have two, you're gonna have one out by three thirty-two and building on it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, that's typically.
Okay, right, and I think one of the comments was, was that um on the location of our our monument sign. Sorry.
All right.
Yeah, it's, we scroll down, it should be.
Yeah, it's on the flip side, I didn't slip over the uh, the plans there, double sided, so.
There you go, okay, so.
So, so, yeah, so I'm showing two two building signs, it was unclear if one was allowed for for building face up to two, and that's usually a pretty, pretty good thing, square footage, again, if we need to adjust it slightly, it's not a big deal. When we get to.
You can work through the signage itself.
But if, you can see here, so uh Burger King's signage is on, is between the the road and and the main road and their access road. Uh, and we'd like to keep it within that same space, you know, in that same line that their sign.
Right.
Um, and the problem that we run into is if you go just a little bit to the, what would be the north of that sign, there's a a row of trees that you cannot see through, and that's why we wanted to try and keep that sign as far off as we could. Um, because we're already on the access road and we're already have stuff back a little bit, so.
Okay, anything else, Doc?
Uh, no, no, just.
Okay, maybe.
Um, signage one guy answered a little bit there for me, I did have a question on the light spillage one, was the as we were showing that picture, was the light spilling over to the road heading towards three thirty-two? Was it?
The front, um, sorry, the private connector road.
Yeah.
Yes, it is, that's, we're, right now, there's lighting along that road and we're upgrading the lighting within the fronts. There's. Yeah, there is, light poles, I should say, I don't know if they can light up.
Yeah, but the spillage won't come all the way to three thirty-two.
Well, it's showing almost to the sidewalk.
Goes to the right way, yeah.
So that's farther out than it goes now, that's all, you know what I'm saying?
Uh, it could be, but you can see.
The main piece doesn't need light all the way out to that sidewalk.
Well. No, but we're we're also not showing it out that far. We're showing it to here, that side, that sidewalk is right here and the edge of the road is down here. Yeah, so. Yeah, no, the sidewalk's here, so that's a good thirty, thirty-five, maybe forty feet away from the property line. Um, and just, just for clarification, what's out there right now, this is the existing plan, you've got a light pole there, light pole there, light pole there, light pole there, so that there.
So if they are, they're very minimal, so it's very.
Could be, but there's also, you know, it's broken up asphalt right now, or on the west side, so. This, this will uh provide additional lighting and and particular safety at night through that portion, because those lights will be on. Um, so all the is, has those areas lit, Burger King has that area lit, so we'll be extending that lighting. Basically, to almost connect where the existing lighting is here for the plaza itself.
All right, anything else? Not with the new information we have, so I mean, probably just continue it.
Okay. Okay, um, so for me, uh, certainly the building elevation is very important and thank you for coming in to find those out, understand the sprinkler in the building and it's something certainly we need to look at, make sure we have enough water into there. Something new that you just found out, we need to do that. Um, I like the fact that you guys had good discussions today on the boardings and where they're gonna be and that type of thing. Um, and I don't have a problem with not, just having a condition of of uh preliminary that uh it's set up for final, but we won't be able to approve final without those boardings because that could change the need to possibly replace the road, no, if it doesn't happen anyway, but it might happen.
Understood.
And uh, the trees on the west or on the, I guess that's the north side there, take a look at them, see what you think we can do for some uh screening there. Um, the other thing is, just from a general review standpoint, we talked today about timing and what we thought was, if you can get enough of the things done to get the next preliminary in by the seventeenth of November, that gives staff time to do what they need to do with the holidays and everything and get it on our December first meeting. I, there's no, I mean, you only have like a few days if you try to get it onto the seventh, or to the next meeting, so, uh, we we talked about that. Ron?
Yeah, I just, I wanna reemphasize the signage issue. Ontario County has standing policy that if you come in with a variance or signage, it's gonna automatically get denied. And that puts a burden on the town to come up to the majority plus ones, both, to over us. So, trying to look at that very closely to avoid that variance, they.
It is not our intention to to try and put a variance forth for a sign.
Yeah, they 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 made it very difficult on the town, three thirty-two is the gateway to the county and God help you. I'm just, I'm just giving you the the advice, you can do.
No, absolutely, it was not our intention to to uh try and give a variance.
Yeah, the other, the other comment is one I had discussion with Matt this morning on. And uh, yeah, Jim, believe it or not, I'm trying to save you some money here. Yeah, in the long term, we've already got a sidewalk coming in from three thirty-two into the plaza area. And and you're proposing another one for this project coming into two thirty, so you're duplicating. And in the final analysis, most people that are gonna be using those financial institutions are gonna be walking off. They're gonna be driving a car, okay? Is there a way that we don't have to put that sidewalk in between three thirty-two and the building? Keep that green area, okay, save Jim some money and 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 work with trying to come up with a internal circulation plan as he moves forward with the build-out.
Right, because somebody coming down ninety-six is gonna come into the plaza area and go over, or somebody coming down north on three thirty-two is gonna come in and all these an area, get on the internal drop, you know, sidewalk, so. I think, I think that's a good idea, I'd rather have that committed to building the sidewalk internally, once it's the right time to do that. And.
So if I, if I could, there are requirements for new buildings for ADA uh accessibility to provide a paved walk to a public right-of-way, so while some pieces of it could be pushed to the future, we will have, and maybe, you know, try to in and take it out later if it gets rearranged, we will have to provide something for ADA compatibility.
All right, good, um.
That's right, Jim.
Dan, go ahead.
I I do want to back to the signage as well, uh, since Ron brought it up, don't forget landscaping is required with any non-building mounted signs, so.
The other thing I had is, and they Adrian brought up what Aaron had said, he's aging, kill him. Uh, something about the stuff behind the building, so we need to make sure that the comments will be made about what we're doing behind the original plaza. It takes care of the screening of the additional dumpster that's there and those types of things there too, so we just need to make sure that that's into the final uh plan, so that we take care of all that rear of the building stuff as well.
If I may, just, Jim, I'd love to have the opportunity to meet with Stan and just, tell me what you need guys done, right there and we can work through it.
Excellent. So the staff, Ron and Dan and Nick, they'll show you what we're talking about, they're familiar with what are these, okay. Um, the other thing is, I just wanted to go on the record to make sure, I know we've kicked this around a number of times, I wanna make sure that everyone understands. This board is pro this building, we want this expansion into the town. Um, we're trying to do everything as consistently as we can as we have for other buildings as we come along. Certainly, uh, this is a gateway project, it's extremely important to us that we address it as a gateway project. And we take enough time that we need to make sure it is a gateway project, so I don't want anyone to go away with anything that other than we're pro, we want it, we just want it done right, and I think you guys are coming a long way and you're doing a good job, so. We just, I didn't want that to not go mentioned as we go forward, okay. I think the board has had our say, staff has, we'll turn it back over to Jerry.
We we appreciate your, Rod, your comments relative to that, and we do appreciate the cooperation that we have had from from staff. Um, and uh, on a lot of topics and from the board, we've been here since June.
Yeah, it's been a while.
And and we're working accordingly through a lot of these issues, that, I started out with with a markup of the of the resolution before I get to a conditional preliminary tonight, uh, and I'm hearing that that's not quite in the cards. But one thing that we want to make sure is that, we wanna make sure that we capture everything, I I take in some notes, probably not as good as I have to, um, I don't know if the ERC on Friday would be an opportunity or or some other time, but we would like to have some sort of definitive compilation or or list of the things that you guys are looking for, uh, so that we can respond to it and hit uh and hit that November seventeenth date of this mission.
John does a phenomenal job with minutes, hopefully he'll capture everything that we talked about, certainly Dan understands what's going on and discuss it again at the PRC. Um, I think, uh, so I think we're in good shape.
Okay, so, John, I, if I may ask, uh, I don't know how quickly it takes to get uh, to get those comments out.
John, how long do you normally get your minutes out to?
Usually by the weekend.
Okay.
And then, and then to the board early in the week.
Okay.
And then we always have the recording.
Okay, if we could just.
Yeah, just right, it sounded to me from the board's perspective, trees, the reservation versus sidewalk and a commitment to do it and then more just time to review the information that you got today, so from a revised plan standpoint, so here on the next one, I'm, we're not really hearing, or I'm not hearing, a lot of. A lot of information that you're asking to be added, again, I think the trees and the reservation for the sidewalk are two that were very clear. And the water service side, so those were the three items that I had, if there's another one, just again, that verbally confirms, I think.
Ron, point four.
You mentioned it earlier, you're working on a new sign for that fence.
And the fact it's. Or screening, whatever it is, and again, we're showing it, we just haven't picked what it is, so again, I think that's probably a final piece that I can condition, but.
And so you understand, we. Once we got the renderings and those types and these things here. We don't usually accept them the day of, and changing the resolution today to get it to the board to review and approve. Is something that we rarely do, because these guys get all over me about it, so.
Completely understand, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure that what we're asking for from a change perspective based on where we're at today.
Right.
That gets on the plan, I make it up.
Do you think the seventeenth of November, getting everything back to us is workable and then get on the first of December with the goal of. Doing a preliminary site plan approval on the first of December?
With that, the fence, water service clarification, trees. And whatever.
Changing and drawing of those two.
For the overall concept plan, that's a straightforward.
We're trying to figure out the size of the signs and make sure that the signs will fit.
Signs are going to come in under separate, that has to actually have the names and the graphics and everything on it before.
Yeah, we'll make sure that, because size-wise, they might be too, you know.
Well, you guys are not requesting a Google for the sign, that's going to be completely separate.
Yeah, it was simply to show the location.
Yes.
For you guys. It should be a whole different application.
Pushing the last.
Well, it'll be part of the sign package.
With the sign, okay.
Yeah, and you're going to, on the preliminary site plan. Show the two locations, Don. I mean. He's a name of course.
Right.
And I agree, he doesn't need to have the details until final, but.
Right.
We need him before we get.
But that will be, allows you to have a approved preliminary site plan on December first. You can go to your credit union with that information and move forward that way, does that make sense?
We'll call November thirty-first, so we're within the mark.
But just to be clear, by that time. They'll be ready to disclose.
Okay.
So what do you see from me on the signage will be more of the final and the paperwork signage will be on the.
Certainly, if you can get that to us by the seventeenth and get it in the package, that's fine, or even if you get it closer to the December first. To the holidays and everything, as long as we can get it a few days ahead of time and review it, it makes a difference, I mean, you know.
And I want it in the record here that November seventeenth is the deadline, if you can get it to us sooner. We really like that. Well, I'm not going to have the staff to review what's in, no, we're going to wait for you to submit, so we can make sure these four things are in there, but.
But at the same time, that's ready to have a discussion.
Yeah, I got cores, fence, easement, trees and water service, that's what I hear.
Jim, you can meet with them anytime on the back or boom, stuff like that.
Just read the resolution, if there's questions, call. Please.
And then Friday, you might be back here for PRC.
We have to confirm those, Sarah, that will be here, yeah, or I'll be here, Jim will be.
I'll be online remotely.
And I think that we can clarify anything that you might still have questions on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
Perfect, appreciate it.
So with that, we have a draft resolution with condition, which I assume there are no issues with the thing, okay?
I'm not hearing any.
Just the sidewalk comment, if that wanted to be changed to include reservation of easement or attempted install versus installing now?
That's a process, that small portion.
Right, correct.
Eight to ten feet or whatever it is.
I'm sorry, I should tell you which one that is, it's condition four on there.
I was on your side of the thing there, condition four.
On the first page.
Be a ten inch section.
So what you're looking for, Matt, is waiting to. Basically, that's a permit and to construct.
If that's straight connection to the rest of the plaza.
It counts as direction upon the further development of the plaza.
Fine. That works.
Glad you brought this back, you know?
Did you hit that down?
And sorry to throw one more out there, but maybe additional landscaping along the north property line? Whether it's six-fourth, we'll take a look at it and bring something back.
Yeah, just plan. Ten is additional landscaping on the north side.
Yeah, ten D, or seven D, excuse me, was on the draft that I had. Maybe it's numbered differently for you guys, it's seven D. Additional landscaping.
Okay. So we have our resolution with condition, modified tonight, I have a motion to wait the reading and approve resolution with the condition and with the changes. So, who's by, you can second by, so, any other comments? Or take a roll, I'll vote.
Lucia?
Alright.
Adrian Bellas, and I.
Alright, alright, we're moving on.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now you guys go Friday. Alright. Alright, so you guys have had fun and enjoyment, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You had fun listening to. The entertainment value we provided is amazing, isn't it? Mary, are you still there? Hi, Mary! Alright. So let's, Dan, get things set up, next item on the agenda is PB eleven oh one dash twenty-one, final two lot subdivision in Gardner Stoll, that's right, so. So, tell us what you're doing.
Well, I think we've done everything except for the inspection, it's scheduled for two weeks from tomorrow.
Okay.
According to the weather I received in the final subdivision flat. That seemed to be the thing that needs to be done, but also a note had to be added to the survey. They preceded us by a. Ninety minutes. So I think that's been done.
Cool.
And.
Okay, we'll turn it over to staff and see if we can get you out of here.
Yeah, I just granted a resolution.
Yeah.
To ensure that the compliance is there with that chapter of the town code. Wastewater treatment systems and. And I agreed on having that as a initial approval, and I guess I worked towards getting that, so. The resolution I granted, I don't have any changes.
Cool, Dan, no, I agree, I've worked with the surveyor on that. You did submit one just before your reading started tonight with the additional condition. That's on here for the resolution, so I think at this point I would be just a fact, and now we're ready to move forward.
Perfect, I wait, engineering.
So Dan, I'm sorry, the subdivision plan that was provided, that we signed off on, does it now show sewer connection to both lots?
No, what the, and this is what we were just talking about, the. Back lot, it may have taken a seat.
Oriented slot.
Yes, and it was on there.
Yes, I'm good then. Okay, engineering is good, okay, no one else in here, Adrian?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah, I'm good, okay, so, next item up is.
Approval of the rest, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, online, you have anybody to speak on this? Two lot subdivision. Any comments from online? Okay. So do we have a motion to wait the reading and approve the resolution with condition? Who's by, you can second by, Doug, Doug, any other comments, or take a roll, I'll vote, please.
Lucia?
Alright.
I'll meet.
Hi.
Adrian Bellas.
Hi.
And I.
Hi. Alright, you're good to go, sorry, I had to wait through all the rest of that, but the entertainment I'm sure was. Tell your friends, it's worth it to come here. And you can zoom in on. Thank you guys for coming by, best of luck. And as soon as you get the final ones in, we'll sign them and get you guys moved, okay?
So, when we get the inspection done. We'll just contact Dan.
Yeah, and then.
Report, so like what it was filed and.
When you get the report, then we can sign the documents.
Yeah, I had an inspection scheduled for two days ago, so I couldn't get a pumper truck at the same time. The inspector wants the tank pumped, while it's there, so.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, have a good one, so the next one up is PB one zero zero two dash twenty-one, preliminary site plan approval for Jim and Nancy Philanga. This is a site plan approval, so do we have anybody online to speak for this?
Chairman, you have the applicant and the surveyor online.
Cool, okay, I see one online, can we hear?
I'm here, if you need me.
Hey, I can hear you now. Go ahead, Mike, tell us what's going on.
Are you guys going to project it up on the screen, or?
Hold on, I have keys on that.
I don't have that one.
No, we don't have that one, we got it in our package.
Okay, so it's a pretty straightforward, single-family residence on a fairly large lot. We were in last week for subdivision, I believe we're. In for final approval on the subdivision tonight, and what, preliminary on the site plan?
Okay. No, this is. This is just preliminary site plan approval.
What about subdivision?
Alright, we'll turn it over to Ron, he can explain where we're at.
My understanding is that we are waiting on the revised.
Am I going to use the mic there, Ron?
Can you hear me, Mike?
Not very well.
What's this, I'm talking into a live microphone, I don't know. Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. We're waiting for the revised preliminary flat drawing so that we can. See that all conditions of approval have been met, and then we'll have it signed. Once it's signed by the departments, then we'll get you on an agenda for final subdivision flat approval.
Okay.
Dan, do you?
No, that's what we're waiting on, yeah. Fill out the application for the final subdivision, and then we can get that moving forward. Tonight, all we have on is your preliminary site plan.
So. So next time around, we can get final subdivision and final site plan if everything's in?
Yeah, if everything was in and been signed off on and all the upagents are in, if they fall together, then yes, we could run them on the same time.
Okay. So are there any questions concerning the preliminary site plan that I can answer?
Okay, well, let's start out with Ron, go ahead, Ron, where are we at tonight, what we have with the resolution?
Okay, the resolution tonight. Basically says that the planning board doesn't accept the part one. Of the environmental record and therefore. Have provided some changes that they want to see made to it. Once those changes have been made and submitted, then they'll consider. Accepting it as complete and move forward with the environmental record. Determination, which is the first step in any action item.
This is on the preliminary cycle.
Preliminary cycle, unlisted act.
So we don't, just so Mike, so you understand, we don't have a completed, we don't have the part one. That staff and board have determined is complete, so until we get that, we can move to the seeker. And move forward with seeker, thus we can't do the preliminary site plan, so. You need to address that one, and maybe next time, at the next meeting, we can do preliminary site plan. Preliminary, or preliminary site plan as well as seeker.
So I know our engineer addressed those and emailed them back over.
Staffs are going to be very quizzically, so they don't seem to indicate that they have received that.
When was it emailed over?
Couple of days ago. I mean, it was just a couple of minor things.
Yeah, but as you know, any minor thing in seeker is subject to. Issues of being complete. And acceptable, and that's what we're looking for is a complete, accurate. Part one.
So please verify that that's been sent or resend it to Dan and Ron if you would, please, so that. You make sure that we get that type one or that part one, so we can continue out in seeker.
For my clients, could you explain the problems with that first part that we had?
They're spelled out in the resolution, the which I assume you were in, you see though.
Yeah, I'm just trying to remember what they were.
Yeah, the. Okay.
Shall we read it?
Ron, you got it right there.
The main of the action is to read preliminary site plan. Lot two, James and Nancy Philanga subdivision. Under the description of the action. It's to read preliminary site plan approval, lot two. Containing a total of six point three two ninety acres of land. For a single-family dwelling with public water supply and private onsite wastewater treatment system. And. The date of the amended part one is to read twenty twenty-one zero one.
Those two things.
Three, three. Didn't take one.
Yeah, no, I know we resent it back, so, you know, it's just, I don't know, it's.
Once we get it, we'll take care of it.
Our package wasn't complete for tonight's meeting, so it has to be moved on to the next meeting to have everything ready for us to go the right direction.
Right. Paying any chords with the meeting. Mike, do you know who sent that to us?
Mike Sponable.
Alright, I'll look into it, but I'm not seeing it in my email, so.
I mean, it's like we're splitting hairs, I mean, we described the action and you guys changed a few words. And, you know, oh, one, but it's got to say two, twenty twenty-one, I mean, I don't.
We take it very pretty seriously, so.
Yeah.
apologize if you think it's minor, but we try to take it very seriously and we'll take care of that. So. Okay? Anything else, okay, so Ron, you, Dan, you say, anything else, Dan?
Tom?
MRV group's initial commulater, the subdivision plan, just, I think it was carryover from last time, just that it be stamped and signed prior to receiving the signatures, which I know Mike and most team, they know that. And then as it relates to the site plan, we did have, I think, three comments, there's more in regards to erosion, aesthetic control notes being added to the plan. That letter was dated on October twenty-ninth.
You got it on October twenty-ninth, MRV letter for the preliminary site.
Correct, it was preliminary, we did a review of the subdivision.
Okay. Anybody else online who want to speak about this before we turn it to the board? Anyone online, like to speak about this application? Ron?
Just for the record, you might want to report that there's somebody in the room.
And for the record, there is nobody in the room except for staff or town hall. I mean, plain. Okay, I'll start with Adrian.
I don't have anything right now.
Get the seeker done and get this thing rolling. Pretty simple, once we get the seeker going and the rest of it, I don't think.
Go to preliminary.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to follow up with my staff, but I just checked my email again, I don't have anything.
So the key is get this, get that part one in. So, the key is get this, get that Part One in, so we can do seeker at the next meeting, so we can do the preliminary site plan approval at the next meeting, and the final subdivision at the next meeting, correct?
If the drawings are in.
If the drawings are in, and if the preliminary drawings are in, sign that the final are in. Okay, Tim?
No, it's all been said.
Doug?
I'm good.
I'm good too, so, we know what, you know what you're doing, and if you've got any questions, reach out to Dan or Ron, they, they know what's going on, and, uh, they'll make sure that you get the right pieces done. Uh, Dan, what's the, the timeframe for the next meeting?
Well, we're already tested, so, I mean, I will, if the seeker's taken care, we'll put this on to the next meeting for its site plan, but final, we'll be able to get on to December.
Yeah, you can, yeah, yeah, final won't be too soon, okay. Alright, Ron?
You do have a resolution, eh?
Yes, we do. Have a resolution to, uh, table this application, so, what is, is there a date in there?
Whenever they...
Whenever they get the paperwork in, okay. So, we had a resolution with, uh, the three conditions that we talked about. Uh, does the applicant have any issues with that? Alright, Mike?
No, not at this time.
Okay, alright, so, with that, do I have a motion to weigh the rating and approve the resolution with the three conditions? Moved by Doc, seconded by Adrian, any other comments? Or figure, vote, vote, please.
Kim and Lucia?
Hi.
Doug Beatz?
Hi.
Adrian Bellas?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi. Alright, guys, you know what you're doing, and, uh, read with staff if you need anything, we'll do our best to get you on the next, uh, next meeting, and, uh, get this thing moved forward, okay? Thank you, guys. Okay, next item is other board action. We, I'd like to put the seeker act, the seeker trading off because, uh, Aaron's not here. Um, next one we have is offer Meadows Section Eight has established me a letter of credit, everything's fine, signed, sealed, delivered. Uh, a lot of nods, a lot of thumbs up, we're good to go. Anybody have any issues with that? I have a motion to weigh the rating and approve the establishing letter of credit.
Motion by Sam.
Tim, seconded by... Adrian, any other comments? Or figure, vote, vote, please.
And Lucia?
Hi.
Doug Beatz?
Hi.
Adrian Bellas?
Hi.
Ellen?
Hi. Ron?
Did you ever think we'd find the day when we do the last letter of credit for this project?
No. This is, I'm still not convinced it's the last one. I'll believe it when we see it. Five, okay.
Two thousand and six, it started.
Yeah. Okay, um, open discussion, Ron?
No, I, uh, just wanna point out that we do have a uh, solar committee that will be meeting to look at the amendments to the Town Solar Regulation. Doug Beatz was graciously agreed to serve on that committee. Um...
Good job.
Yeah. And, uh, we have others.
I'm only afraid.
This is in regards to the current moratorium.
Right.
Now that the court has rendered its decision on the solar application, there are things that have been identified during the course of dealing with the special use permit, the site plan approval and whatnot, the decommissioning plan, and other things that, uh, we've now incorporated in the revised regulation. And we've also improved or clarified a few of the other uh, sections, ninety-nine and one hundred in the town code, so, um, that was set up today, these work sessions will be televised, it will be an opportunity at the end of each session for public comment. Um, we trying to finish this by the middle of December, so we can get it to the town board for them to submit to county, so they can act on it at their January meeting. Um, and it's all being driven by the timeline that exists in the current moratorium, which expires on February ten.
Perfect.
So, uh...
And are there any changes at state level, that are gonna drive any changes to our code?
Not at the state level, other than the those large solar farms
Right.
that now are exempt from our purview. Um, the only other thing we have done here is what is called for in the conference plan update, and that is trying to address uh, measures to protect uh, the viable agricultural soils for the, uh, criteria in the special use permit that requires if you have a parcel of land that's one of the strategic farmlands identified in the Farmland Protection Plan, that adjacent strategic farmland has to have an easement on it for the life of the solar farm, so that we're not
Alright.
losing the opportunity here to continue to support and sustain agriculture in our community.
I must say, um, driving through Cohocton, North Cohocton, and seeing all the wind, uh, there was the turbines and all of that, and going, "Gosh, solar's so much nicer looking than all of those sitting on the tops of the old downtown areas," like, what is there? And there was, there's some significant solar down there too, we did, okay, not huge, but some solar, which I found much more aesthetically pleasing than the, uh, than maybe a big old wind turbine, so... Any else, Ron?
No, that's it.
Dan?
Um, couple of updates for you at your next meeting. Uh, you have Lewis Road Industrial Park for their preliminary site plan and their special use permit. Here's their medical for their final subdivision, final site plan. Um, and possibly, uh, the preliminary site plan for Palenga. As long as we get everything, which I think we will. Um, so, there's a few, uh, private sand, and then obviously you just continue tonight the credit union to the December first meeting, and I don't know what else is gonna hit in December, because we're not past the seminal date for that, so...
Okay.
Um, but we'll see what December will bring.
Cool.
And, uh, that's about all I got for the night.
Cool. Is Lewis Road bringing us something, or is this a routine that you don't have yet?
I'll have a better feeling after PRC on Friday.
Yeah.
Uh... I, I don't know. I, I know that they said that they had a lot of irons in the fire. Uh, that the supervisor had a conversation with the owner
Right.
of, uh, the car dealership.
Car dealership.
Yeah, he was adamant that he wants to come here, he said, he needs more time.
Oh, that's, that's fine, I mean...
I, I mean, he doesn't wanna put you guys...
Right now, just 'cause you're behind on some other stuff, so...
Yeah, and he feels bad for having to not move forward at the moment, but he needs to put his focus where the dealership is.
I mean, maybe it might be wise to ask him at PRC that that maybe we need to bump it more than a month for him right now?
That may be one of the winter, and obviously, if he's got big irons going,
calling CS in December or wherever it would be, probably isn't realistic.
Right, so, I mean, I'm gonna ask those questions at PRC.
Good.
Uh, either way, they have to come to your next meeting, because
No, yes.
But maybe we don't continue it to December, maybe you're right, maybe we continue it ninety days out or something, if you're there.
I don't think we have a problem, but if we understand the situation, we want them there eventually, when they're ready.
So, uh, just so you guys have a little bit of the background.
Yep.
Uh, we are trying to keep them moving with the special use permit at least, uh, because I think that's one that they could easily get off the table kinda thing. Uh, there wasn't a lot of requirements in the
Right.
uh, resolution for that one, but obviously, the site plan's gonna take a little bit more to do, so...
Don?
Well, as you can imagine, on both points, uh, we are trying to work with drainage somewhat to any places that we think we're able to improve any of the situation that's going on with uh, excess water, uh, in light of the water that we've been getting is somewhat out of our control. That said, we are working on on the ditches, pipes, winging, stuff of that nature that really are are kind of a futile battle, but we're still working at it. Uh, and secondly, uh, we are working on getting equipment ready. Wings on, iron on, get it ready. As most of you saw today, there were a few birds in the air, which, that's our warning, so...
Hmm, there's a bird, isn't there?
And, and John Robitella will make it out there if she was a windman.
Hey, um, Lance? How was your vacation?
I had a great vacation, I, we had a good one as well, I think.
I did, I did.
I was just gonna ask Mr. B, I get that on the table, but he just expects to kiss my lady. Um, no, I don't have, I don't have any...
You're good?
There, there's one more thing I wanna just put in the record.
Go ahead.
The, uh, conference of plan update committee did have their public...
Yes, they did, yep.
Last Thursday evening, it was, uh, both in person and on Zoom. Dan told me earlier today that there's been some hits on the Zoom meeting, uh, since the, it was the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eight, ten.
Okay. Uh, there was three or four people in the audience, and then three or four people online, and not many.
I was just carrying... But we have had some views on the YouTube, which not to say much, but has more views than you guys have, so...
I mean, there's nothing to show in saying it, so...
You don't have to be professional.
But no, we're, we are happy to see that people have watched it.
Good.
There's one, there's just one other thing that we published that has more views, so that's good. And if you are trying to learn, it's still not as many people as you'd like, but...
Yes, maybe so.
It is worth it. Okay, thanks. Okay, my turn. I wanna just go on the record very clearly, and I'll do the same with the town board if the next time we're meeting at a tent. Um, we've provided a litigation, um, as you, as you all know, that should've discussed at the last meeting. Uh, but personally, I wanna thank, uh, John. Without John's notes, without John's minutes, without John's organizational skills, without his abstract, I don't know how staff and our legal counsel would've put all the pieces together to put together a a compelling, um, uh, answer to the questions that were being brought up. So, John, great job, thank you very much for everything you did. How many did we end up in the abstract?
Two hundred and nine.
Two hundred and nine documents.
Still coming in.
And there's still coming in, so it's kinda great. Second one is Dan and his staff, um, you know, we're really good at what we do, I think, as the board, but without your stuff and your staff and what they have done to keep us for two and a half, three years, or whatever, we're long we've been doing this, they keep us grounded in what we've done, we really appreciate it, and I personally appreciate it. Um, uh, it's, it's been a great process, and then we've learned a lot, and I think we've done the right things, and it was kinda proven by uh, the results of the litigation. And then I can't leave out Ron, who has done a phenomenal job with the resolutions and the documenting the conditions and making sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. And all the things that we've done, um, honestly, couldn't have been done without you personally. Uh, it's been great, it's been, like I said, it's been a hell of a learning experience. Uh, I don't think anyone on this board ever thought we'd have a project like that, that long, with that much public input through the process. So, uh, we certainly appreciate your, uh, involvement in this and everything you did. And your work with, certainly with legal counsel, uh, and help them through that whole process, so we really appreciate from all of that. And of course, Don, thanks for letting us shoot your building. But I, but I think the whole staff is pulled together, I mean, engineering, we've done so many things to make sure that we did the right things with seeker, with the process in general. Um, I think, uh, I think it's a great lesson in other municipalities, if they wanted to know how to do it right, should just look at what we did, and I think we did a phenomenal job, so... I'll get off the soapbox now, but I thought we did, and, and certainly the board, of course. Uh, we've all done the right thing, and done the, you know, asked the right questions, answered the right questions from, from the public and the government, so... Okay, I'll get off, uh, my soapbox on that. I thank everybody for taking care of things last meeting since I was gone. Um, and certainly, I was at a very nice restaurant with my lovely wife and, uh, family, so, uh, it was certainly much better than being here, I will say.
Gross.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know, don't, don't get hurt, you know? Okay, that's all I had. Uh, board, anything else? Tim?
No.
Doug? Adrian?
Well, you know, can't just say that.
You can't, and we know that, that's why I love to...
I have two things. One, Don, congratulations on your win last night.
Good.
Uh, two, um, Myers looks like he's doing alright now, I see the curving was up a week or so ago and stuff, and it's moving and...
We'll see how the weather will go.
The blind.
We gotta get some white cotton.
And what about the, is the car wash still behind on that side too?
Well, they have to get some black cotton down too, so...
So, most of these guys could be in trouble here, too. When's Blacktop plans closed?
A lot of it depends on weather.
And anywhere, anywhere from the fifteenth, uh, generally the fifteenth, the fifteenth is it's not before the fifteenth, but I've seen them run all the way to December, weather allows.
Yeah, and it's supposed to be fifty-five degree weather next week and stuff, so...
I think, yeah, I think we're gonna get another couple weeks in November, but weather can change at any given time.
We're in global warming, we need it. And Dunkin' Donuts is only doing interior stuff?
They are.
They made that thing down, the, just the walls.
Uh, Dunkin' Donuts has a permit, they're redoing the inside, but they are changing out signage, uh, same size signage, but it's the new look.
The new D.
Yeah, it's the, the two D's, instead of spelling out Dunkin' or something, I don't... But it didn't, it didn't meet the criteria to come back in front of you guys, because we weren't changing sizes, we weren't changing the locations. Uh, they were replacing, even how it's loaded up, so...
Good?
Yep.
Now, I will give you some advice. If you're traveling, be aware, things have changed. When a Waffle House only allows takeout, things have really changed. So, you can't get breakfast before seven in the morning in most places right now when you're traveling. Takeout only in Waffle House where I was at in North Carolina. Uh, friggin' craziness on the road, what you can get, can't get, what, it's just it's bizarre.
Your steering wheel got all sticky.
Yeah, well, I wasn't gonna eat in the car for breakfast, okay? I'll eat lunch maybe in the car, but I'm not eating breakfast in a friggin' car, so... I had to wait till seven o'clock to get to a Cracker Go. Um, it's pretty crazy. So, if you're traveling, take weirdness into consideration.
The struggles of the...
The struggle of...
Like the United Lady, you're going down there for two days and that, but...
Or, or... And do work as a boy on the road.
Or a hotel conference, right?
Yeah, but even those, half of them don't start till seven. I'm on the road by five thirty-six.
They don't have those anymore.
Yeah, a lot of them don't have them, yeah, that's true.
Last one I was in is the microwave, two D and sausage.
Yeah. Well, and, yeah, and actually, the hotel I stayed in, he, you know, he used to have the microwaves in the rooms, took them out.